Senator McCready, you can lead us in prayer.
Dear the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, and dear Lord heaven, thank you for your blessings and thanks for allowing me to be here today. I ask that you guide us through the acceptance and that you allow us to hold our hearts for the great goodness of the people of Guam. I ask this in the name of these prayers, our Father, who is on heaven's side, who has taught us how to be faithful and faithful to God on earth. He will give us His care, He will give us our trespassing. He will give you those trespassing, and He will give you those who have been in the past, and He will give us from the past.
Thank you very much, Senator. For the recitation of the Inefresi, Senator Munia Barnes, you can lead us. Thank you, Senator. And if Senator Siniklis, you can lead us in the Guam hymn in Chamorro. And Senator Duñez, the singing of the national anthem.
Oh, say, can you see? I don't see thy light. What so proudly we hail at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright sunrise shines through the perilous sky? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. May I ask the clerks to take, we'll call. Senator Tom Attap. Senator Tony Attap. Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Lim Tiaco. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklis. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the legislative journals dated April 22nd through the 30th, 2013, May 1st, 2013, May 2nd, 2013, and May 3rd, 2013, all subject to correction.
Motion without any objections, so ordered.
And I also want to, for the record, thank the clerk and her staff for making these journals available, also making it available online for the public's review. Madam Speaker, I move that these communications and petitions on item eight be appended to the session journal.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And there are messages from Imagallan, Guam, and I move that they also be appended to the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that they be appended to the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, and so item 12, I move that on the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, that bill number 105-32COR, bill numbers 106-32LS, and bill number 107-32LS, and bill 108-32COR through bills 117-32COR, resolution number 131-32LS, resolution number 132-32COR through 138, resolution 138-32COR, and certificate number 21-32COR through certificate numbers 27-32COR, all be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move, under motions, item 13, Madam Speaker, I move that any resolution or certificate of commensory or condolence in nature that's introduced for this session day, that it be automatically adopted, approved by this body, and that the sponsor work with the legal counsel and the clerk and her staff in the preparation of these documents, and that all senators be co-sponsors in the event there are any of these resolutions or certificates of commensory or condolence in nature.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And I understand, Madam Speaker, that there's an override attempt, so I defer to the sponsor of that bill, that vetoed bill.
Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and should this my seat, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that notwithstanding the governor's veto, vetoed bill 81-32COR be placed in the voting file for the purpose of an override, and I'd like to discuss the matter.
On that motion, as Speaker, you may continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, once again, we're here to try and present an opportunity for GovGuam employees to have the opportunity to make a choice in the health care services that they will have available for their families. Madam Speaker, when we discussed this bill, I started out by saying that this bill really isn't about me, it isn't about Select Care, it isn't about the governor, it is about what this government wants to do, how it wants to do it, and at how much does it want to do it for, in the provision of health insurance services for their families, retirees, and employees of the government of Guam. And I sincerely meant that, that it wasn't about me. Unfortunately, the governor, in his veto message, wants to make it about me, where he says in veto message, things that are absolutely unrelated to the matter and the subject matter of the bill. I even made the painful decision to remove anything that would tie this bill to a single person. I removed all of the legislative intent, which may have in there things that the governor could have said, this is politics, not policy, this is about the chairman of the committee on appropriations, and I removed all of that so that, at its barest, at its most honest intent, all you had before you was, what is the government going to do in the provision of health insurance, and how is it going to do it? But no, he insists in his veto message. He said, let's stop beating around the bush on this issue and call this for what it is. It is what it is. Today, we have a health insurance program, one choice for the government of Guam employees, no opportunity to make any other choices of health insurance companies that are available on the island, providing health insurance to thousands and thousands and thousands of private sector workers, and thousands and thousands and thousands of employees of the government of Guam and their families. Every single market of health insurance has an opportunity to choose, except for the government of Guam health insurance program. And what bill 181, oh, 81, does, is it guarantees that choice in the process that we have outlined in the bill. It ensures that when the government of Guam goes out for health insurance, it will require that everyone who submits a bid, and this bid is qualified and financially sound, that they will have an opportunity to offer their services and programs to the government of Guam employees. That's what it is. Nothing else, it's as simple as that. It guarantees freedom of choice and access to the market. The governor also says that everything is based on erroneous assumptions and financial projections. Absolutely, once again, you know, a misdirection. The bill, for what it is, says that the government of Guam has a certain amount of dollars, and that's what we're going to spend. And if you are a company interested in providing services to the GovGuam employees, their families, retirees and their families, you submit a bid that meets that price point, and you will qualify to offer your services to the employees and their families, the retirees and their families. That's what it is. It is not about keeping the market close to one single carrier. So it guarantees choice, and it guarantees savings, because the price we picked to say that this is how much the government of Guam is willing to pay, is below, almost $5 million, below what we're spending today. And why do we think we can get somebody to come in and bid at $5 million less than what we're paying today? It's not based on financial projections, it's not based on assumptions, it's based on experience. It's based on what we call the claims experience that the GovGuam pool of business has been running at, what it has been costing us over the last five, in this case, over the last 15 months of actual dollars that we paid out to the insurance company, and of the $75 million that we paid them, or 78, they used a certain portion of that, they used about 70, of the 75, they used about 70, $68 million less, I mean, to pay the expenses. So we know, when we say, this is how much the government's willing to pay, it's because everything that we've paid for and what the health services have caused or cost the employees and their families, is, that's what it costs. No conjecture, no projections, based on claims data. Governor said, you need empirical data. That is the empirical data. That is why we're saying, we can cap this thing at $68 million, and we're confident that employer, employee, or health insurance companies will bid in this, will bid. So we know that it is not about projections, it is about real time, 15 months worth of data, the additional two years worth of data the year before. And we know that that's what it's going to cost, because the other reason why we know is that when we first went into the, what we commonly call Obamacare, one of the features of Obamacare was, you can only keep a set percentage of the total premiums that you earn as an insurance, health insurance company, you can only keep a certain amount for overhead and profit, that 15% of your total premium, minus some adjustments and deductions allowable by law, you can keep 15% for your overhead and profit, and 85% of that premium dollar must be dedicated to providing direct health services to the employee and their families. And so, when that provision kicked in, and that if you spend less than 85%, you have to give that back to the employee so that he can use it now for, however, it's a refund for himself and his families. So what have we kind of experienced, empirical data we have? Well, we know that the first year that the, what we call, the process I described is called the medical loss ratio provision of the Obamacare Act, we know that in the first year that that contract, that the government of Guam contract was subject to the medical loss ratio, we received a refund of almost $7.8 million. So we know that we're overpaying for health insurance, because they spend less than 85% of the premium dollar on benefits for health services, and that has to be refunded back, and we got 7.8. If we had had the benefit of including the first quarter of that contract here, because the medical loss ratio goes from January to December, but the GovGuam health insurance contract goes from October to September, so in the first year, that 7.8 million was only nine months, because the contract for that fiscal year, subject to the MLR, began in October, so from October to December, that portion wasn't covered, but you know what the medical loss ratio was on that one single quarter? Almost an additional $10 million. And you know why it's $10 million in that and $8 million in the nine months? Because that is the time when you earn your premium and you pay out almost nothing for health services. Why? Because you have your deductible, $1,500. You have your deductible for your family, $4,000. Before the health insurance company takes any premium dollar and begins paying for your medical services in that first quarter, you have to meet your deductible. So the health services that employees and their families are paying for during that first quarter of October to December, is their own money out of pocket. That's why that medical loss ratio was so high in that first quarter. But that first quarter was not subject to the medical loss ratio under PACA, because unfortunately, it was from October to December and not part of the January to December contract. That's the first year. The second year, once again, we thought that the governor says, well, you have to give the opportunity for the health insurance negotiating team to negotiate. If you don't negotiate, you can't reduce prices. Well, they've had the opportunity to negotiate all this time, and the one time we saw a reduction in our rates was when the year before, the contract had increased in cost by $22 million. So year one, they're negotiating, we get the contract, year two, they're negotiating, the price rises by $22 million under the negotiation process. The next year, because it's just so blatant, you can't hide a $22 million elephant in that room. You just can't hide it. And so what happens? They negotiated a reduction of $11 million. Of course, because there's a $22 million elephant that's saying, profit, profit, profit. So that was the one time, the governor says, oh, we reduced. Yes, I agree, they reduced that cost, but it was at a price of $22 million in increased cost in that contract year from the previous year. So we reduced that. Again, another year of negotiations, what happens? Increase in prices. The fourth year of negotiation, another, and we don't know what that increase, I mean, we don't know what that profit is in that third year. This is the negotiation process. The fourth year, PACA kicks in. Oh, no, let me backtrack. The governor says, we've been tinkering with the law on health insurance all this time. That is correct. The two things we did that have bared the soul of this health insurance contract and the profits, you know, that have been wreaked, wrecked by, on the pocketbooks of the government, as well as the employees, because they pay for it too, the two things we changed was, one, we wanted claims data. We don't want you to just show us your financial projections and so, we want the data, we want the real hard data of how much you're paying for health services, how much you're retaining for administrative and profit. Yeah, we tinkered, and we put that in place, and we said, you got to give that to us. We don't want the projections, we don't want your assumptions, we want the claims data. And so we got, we passed that law, and what do we got? We get the claims data, and the first year under the contract in which we had that claims data, what happened? We found out that we overpaid by $18 million. Once again, that the total cost, and that's $18 million, over and above the 15% retention rate, so they already get to keep the $7, $8 million for overhead and profit, and on top of that, they had a profit on what they set aside to pay for direct health services of another $18 million. And PACA kicks in, and they said, give it back, give it back to the employees, and that's what happened. So the fifth year, negotiation process again, and what do we get? We get another thing. Did it say we save money during negotiations? No. PACA kicks in, the laws that we passed that says, give us your claims data, kicks in, and what do we get? Another $7.8 million in rebates under the medical loss ratio. That's what it is. It is what it is, and that's what it is. So this idea that, my God, if we don't negotiate, we can't save money, the negotiation process has cost us money, and the laws that this legislature have passed to open it up, be transparent in the expenditure of government monies, and how much health care are we getting for the health care dollar that we're paying, we find out we're getting not enough health care, and that money should be returned to us, to the employees and their families, to meet their everyday needs. And that's what this bill, 81, would do. It would guarantee that we don't have to wait until the medical loss ratio kicks in, we just reduce the premium. And if we come in and we're still overpaying, then we're saving $5 million upfront and getting a rebate. But under the negotiation process, we save nothing, and we just have to hope on the rebate, and wait, and wait almost 15 months for that rebate to come back, when that father could use that $300, $500, $800, whatever rebate he's going to get from the medical loss ratio, he could have used that today. If Bill 81, he doesn't have to wait for that money, that $5 million is built into the reduction in the service, I mean, in the cost that we will be paying. In addition, Bill 81, Madam Speaker, addresses the issue of this medical loss ratio and the out-of-pocket costs, because we know how hard it is. Some people defer going to the hospital or going to the clinic because of that out-of-pocket expense, that first dollar coverage that they need for medical services. And so they don't go to the doctor, they kind of wait until it's a little bit more serious, and then it's going to cost them $300, and at least that's $300 to my deductible. Well, Bill 81 recognizes how hard that is, to come up with the $1,500 for an individual, and the $4,000 for an employee and his family before getting, being free to access medical care without the thought of, man, I can't afford my deductible. That's what Bill 81 does. It provides, in its design, a subsidy to the, a payment to the employee and his family, and the subscriber, of up to 750, to go towards meeting the first $1,500 in deductible, and $1,500 to the family to meet that first $4,000 in his deductible. It provides that payment from the savings that we've done by capping it of the cost of this. So it makes health care more accessible to the GovGuam employee and their families. That's what Bill 81 does, not the way it is today, where you come up with the $4,000 for those services that require the meeting of the deductible, and you don't have to really think about it, because you've at least got $1,500 of that first dollar deductible. That's what it is, that's what Bill 81 is. The governor talks about that he warned us that if we kept, if we passed the bill that we had last year, that it would lead to protests. Now, forgive me, but the bill didn't pass. I wore my lucky shirt that day, but I didn't get the override vote last year. And yet, what do we have? We have four protests filed. That wasn't under the process outlined by Bill 81. He's saying, hey, if you pass 513 last year, you're going to get all these protests. We didn't, we couldn't, because he had his lieutenant governor veto the bill. And we got four protests. Now he's saying here, I warned you that if you go down this path, you're going to get protests. Well, he prevented us from going down that protest, and then we got four protests, under the system that he wants to preserve. He wants to make sure we don't put 81 in that opens the market and guarantees choice, savings. He wants to prevent this body and this government from moving in that direction, offering this relief to the families and to the government of Guam and to the taxpayer that has to pay the cost of health insurance for the GovGuam employees, because that's what it, no. The protests that have resulted last year is the same process that he wants to preserve by vetoing Bill 81. There's where the protests occurred, because the process involved there contains so much subjective factors in waiting and ranking the proposals. That's the testimony that insurance professionals gave during the roundtable meetings that we had, on how do we move forward on eliminating all this protest in the procurement of health services and health insurance for the GovGuam employees. We had a roundtable meeting, all the insurance companies were represented, and I'll tell you, all of them at that time in there, including Select Care, says, we need to simplify the process, we need to eliminate subjectivity, and we need to ensure that it is fair, open, and honest. And when we said, where does that process exist today? And they said, well, you need to take a look at how the federal government does it. They said, that's the closest you can get to that. And so we did, we looked at it, and Bill 81 doesn't mirror that process exactly, but it's, it's close to that. It eliminates the subjectivity in the rankings. It ensures that it's fair, open, and honest, because it's a bid, there's no opportunity to be subjective, and it guarantees that the market will be open to competitors to improve the offerings to the employees. The governor said, no, we need to go with just one single carrier, because there's a 1992 The governor said, no, we need to go with just one single carrier because there's a nineteen ninety-two study. Well, even Selectcare said, hey, I want a piece of that federal government contract. And I want to be in that. I want to be offered on Guam. And what did they do? They spent a few years working on it because it's a lot more cumbersome than our process. But they got included into the market and did the government, did the federal government said, oh, well, I have another bidder. I can't, I'm only gonna go with one? No. They said, come on in. We've qualified you. We agree with your pricing. We agree with your, your offering of benefits. Compete. Yet Selectcare today and the governor in this case is saying, no. We don't want to say that. We just wanna say we only want one. The process today doesn't guarantee that choice as Selectcare had the opportunity of being guaranteed into the federal employees market to compete with the other offerings as long as they were qualified. And that's what we do here, Madam Speaker. So what is this all about? What should we call, what should we stop beating around the bush and call it, call it for what it is? Well, take a look at what happened with this bill. The last bill, the governor issued a press release out of his office saying, I'm not gonna act on this bill. I can't because of it's a conflict of interest. So I'm gonna let my lieutenant governor act and the lieutenant governor vetoed the bill. Surprise, surprise, surprise. But that's what he said. This time around, because there is no existing protest, so nobody can claim that, hey, you can impinge on the procurement process in which there's a protest. There's not. So if this bill passed, it can go through. And even the objections of the, of my colleagues in here was, let's not interfere with the procurement process. There's a protest being filed. We can't pass this bill because we have a process and that process is under protest and we got these companies protesting the contract and the award. Well, there's none now. So we can move forward and that argument has dissipated. So nobody can now stand up and say, we can't interfere with the procurement process. That's what it is. That's what he says, let's not beat around the bush for. There's no opportunity now, under this bill, if it passes, to use and leverage not letting people in once they meet the criteria. No opportunity. That argument, that door's been shut and has been, and has been resolved. So the process can move because we are in the procurement process now. Why does he need to do, to, why, why did he veto? Because there are no proposals that have been submitted at this time. So you can't say we're interfering because no, the government of Guam has announced the availability of the RFP and the RFP submittals are not due. Should we, are not due yet. So nobody submitted anything and so you can't protest that. The government can cancel, can cancel an RFP at any time prior to submission of the proposals. And so if this bill passes today, there are no proposals due, no proposals that have been submitted, no opportunity for anybody to protest a cancellation of a bid because there's, the timeline has not come to submit their proposal. That's why this is critical, that we act in this timely manner. That's what it is. That's why the governor vetoed this. That's what it is. That's not beating around the bush. The conflict of interest, it was the governor who declared in the last bill that he had a conflict of interest. I didn't ask him if he had a conflict of interest. But he issued a press release that says, I'm not gonna touch this issue because I have a conflict. Mister Lieutenant Governor, can you please do this? I'm going to Saipan. And off he went and the lieutenant governor picked up his pen and vetoed it. That's what it is. This time around, because he knew that even if we overrode the bill, there was all this protest in the pipeline that could, that could continue then to say that Selectcare will continue to be the sole provider of health insurance for the GovGuam employee because of all this. And that's exactly what happened. But this time around, that argument's not there. This time around, he decided he was gonna veto it himself. If he declared he had a conflict back then, why didn't he have a conflict today in this bill? And he vetoed it himself, not even addressing the issue that last time I said, I can't do it. It is what it is. It's to protect that seventy-five million dollar contract. It's just what it is. That's what the governor's asking for. What is it? That's what it is. To ensure that the monopoly of a single provider, Selectcare, continues. The opportunity for that to continue. Under this process, there's no opportunity for that to continue. I can't afford, I'm gonna veto the bill. I'm gonna do it myself. Conflict of interest or no conflict of interest, be damned. I'm gonna do it myself this time. The other thing is, what is it? This bill can be implemented because, again, I mentioned, nothing in the procurement process is in the pipeline that could truncate the right of any vendor at all that is interested in providing service to the GovGuam employee. Because proposals are not due, no proposals are submitted at this time. In addition, because there were some questions in the, in the earlier bill, we sat down with the Attorney General. And we said, what were your concerns in the other bill? That we need to fix in this bill to ensure that this bill can be implemented and will minimize to the greatest degree possible the opportunity for protest. And we sat down, we outlined all of them, we addressed them, he gave us language, we adopted them. And then we said, what if there is a protest, even though we have resolved these issues that you have pointed out? Whatever, he says, get an expedited protest resolution process that you guys did for Ara funding. And we said, and I was a little hesitant because I didn't want to truncate anybody's due process rights in terms of protesting a government bid. So I was kind of hesitant. But the Attorney General convinced me that that's the best way to go. That the, that this Ara expedited procurement resolution protest process has been vetted out in other jurisdictions. We vetted it out here when passing it for some of the DOE projects. And I said, all right, we'll go along with that. So we resolve issues that raise concern that could result in a protest under Bill eighty-one's process, working with the Attorney General and then provide it for a contingency of what if there's a protest anyway? So once again, we know, based on all the discussions and history and fact, that that's what we have here. What is this? It is a process of acquiring health insurance for the GovGuam employees that will benefit the employees and their families, the retirees and their families and the taxpayer of Guam who pays the bill for this health services contract. That's what it is. It is a process that is implementable, that will not mire us in protest, that will result in guaranteed savings to the employee, the government of Guam and most importantly, the taxpayer of Guam. That's what it is. What is this? It is a process that will eliminate the monopoly we have in which one single company will be the provider of health insurance services to the GovGuam employees. And it threatens the family interests and that's what it is. And that's why it was vetoed. That's, that's what the governor has said. And has, in all the writings that he has and all of the arguments that he made, that's all this is in the end. It's not about me. It's not about the employees and their families and the savings that they can realize, the retirees and their families and the savings they can realize. It's not about overpaying to the tune of seven, eight million dollars a year and having to wait fifteen months to bring back, to rebate that and put it back in the pockets of the employees. It is about protecting interests. So the only question then is, whose interests are we gonna protect? Are we gonna protect the taxpayer's interest? Who pays for the cost of this health insurance by lowering it? Are we gonna protect the employee's interest? Who now will have a choice on where he can go? Is it about ensuring that the employees of the government of Guam will be able to put savings in their pocket every single payday? Instead of overpaying for health insurance and then waiting fifteen months to get that refund and rebate? It sounds like tax, tax refund all over. Is that, is that, are those the interests we wanna protect? My answer to that question is yes. I believe that's the interest I wanna protect and I certainly hope those are the interests that every single body of this, every single member of this body will protect. Instead of protecting one single interest. And that's what it is, Madam Speaker. And that's why I'm pleading with my colleagues. Please, please. Support this override. Support the Guam taxpayer in lowering the non-taught taxes that he pays for health insurance for the benefit of GovGuam employees. Support the employee who will now have the ability to make first dollar payments by him getting seven hundred and fifty dollars towards his deductible. Support the families who be able to get greater access to healthcare immediately in help with that first dollar deductible of fifteen hundred dollars. Support GMH. Support GMH. This, it will ensure that those that access GMH can at least pay, if they haven't met their deductible and they get hosp- can at least pay fifteen hundred dollars of their bill to GMH immediately because they have the money in the deductible. And that the quicker the subscriber meets his deductible, the quicker the health insurance company's gonna pay his other bills when he needs healthcare. Instead of continuing to wait until the employee can collect the balance of his deductible, all four thousand instead of twenty-five hundred. For some of us, that may be not, no, inconsequential. For many, many, many GovGuam employees, it really is about getting healthcare or not getting healthcare when you need it. That's what I'm asking for. The support for those things. Support for our community, everyone in our community. And let's not protect a single interest in this. Let's protect the community interests, the taxpayer's interests, the employee interests, their families' interests, the retirees. And let's guarantee that this economy and this government will have a policy for open, fair and honest competition. Thank you and Sidus Masie, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Hafaday, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to our colleagues. First off, Madam Speaker, in twenty eleven, my first term here, I've introduced a bill that eventually became law. It was Public Law thirty-one dash twenty-four. What that did, Madam Speaker, was allow for the Chairman of Committee on Health as well as the Chairman of Committee on Appropriations to sit in these health negotiations, this health negotiation committee. Although I initially, when it was first introduced, wanted to ensure that the chairman of these two committees were voting members, you know, we, we did get a, I believe it was an agey opinion, was only an opinion that said that, you know, this may not be possible. It was, it may be inorganic. And so, you know, we, we didn't challenge it. We buckled and we said, okay, we'll be ex-official members. But we're still members of this negotiating team. And so I, I, you know, I took my role very seriously and I made sure that, you know, I was there in those negotiations. And the first negotiation was done in, for, I believe, fiscal year twenty twelve. That was when we were able to see a reduction of about over ten million dollars in premiums and a four million, about four million dollar increase in benefits. And sure, you know, this, this, this reduction was based on a previous, previous premiums that were increased tremendously. So this, and so with this fiscal year, there's, there's, there's not negotiations going on, but the process has started. And so I've, I've been involved in the process in, in moving forward and the RFP coming out very recently. So motion is in play for that. Now going back to Bill eighty-one, Madam Speaker, and where we're at today. When a bill came out as well last term and eventually became law, Public Law thirty-one, one ninety-seven, I supported that bill wholeheartedly. Because I said, I remember, I was reflecting early, I remember what I said. I stood up here, Madam Speaker, and I said, you know, we need to be able to see behind the curtains. The way we've been doing things, Madam Speaker, in the past is that we have, if we have multiple proposals that come in for health insurance coverage for employers and retirees, they rank them and you only sit down the table and negotiate with one company. And I remember saying here during discussions on that, on that bill, that we needed to see behind the curtains on proposal number two, proposal number three, four, five, whatever. Because we know when we sit down with one company, we're able to negotiate. And if there's other people out there, we're able to say, hey, this is something we have. How can you beat this? So it gives, you know, so I, I supported that, that initiative. However, Madam Speaker, we were never able to, to see how that, how that public law would work for us. Because this fiscal year, well, this fiscal year that, that we're in today, there was a protest. However, Madam Speaker, we were able to, the RFP went out, we were able to, to sit down with at least one of them. And, you know, I must, I must say, Madam Speaker, at that point, we're just sitting down with one before the protest came in, I was pretty satisfied. I was pretty satisfied in seeing what kind of, what kind of services we could potentially get for our employees and retirees. And so unfortunately, a protest happened. And so we're, we're stuck with the same, with the same plan we had for the, for the previous year. So that leads me, that leads me back to our discussion on the override, Madam Speaker. This concept that, that the good author of this bill has, has proposed, you know, may be a good concept. I don't know. And it's something that I believe if it's, if it's gonna improve, something that is, that would be better for our people, our employees, our retirees, maybe we should explore this. But, Madam Speaker, had this discussion, where this discussion had prior to where we're at today in the process of the RFP, that would have been something that for me would have been more acceptable. And so I'm not closing the door in, in future. And if we, if we're saying perhaps the next fiscal year or whenever in the future, this is the way we wanna do things, then maybe that's something we need to look, we need to take a look and explore because we can't stop. And I commend that author, this author of this, of this bill for continuously looking at ways to improve the way the process is done, at least the way he sees it done. And I commend him for that. And so these are some of the, the positions in my mind that, that I've been, I've been thinking about and been reflecting on. And so I wanted to be able to, to put that on record and, 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 and see how the rest of this- of this, the rest of the discussion goes. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. Are there any other speakers on the motion? Senator Sinicalis, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, when I think about Bill eighty-one, and I think about all of the true and important points that the author of the bill brought up, I have a very strong appreciation for the work of Speaker Ben. He really does his homework. He really does his research and he really, really digs deep and he writes very good legislation that encompasses many different aspects on many complicated areas. And one of the things I appreciate most about Bill eighty-one is when you step back and think about it, when you think about how it will help people, you see almost a work of art and a very skilled statesman putting together a very good piece of work that's going to do a lot of good things for people. And that's what we're here to do as senators. And it's very difficult. It's a very difficult thing to do because there's a lot of realities that we have to deal with. There's political realities. Very, those are very heavy realities for our Republican colleagues in this House. Because no doubt, there are a lot of political questions that will be answered one way or another through the course of the voting on this override. And I also have a deep respect and appreciation for the position that they're in. Because as you read the work, the very good work of Speaker Pangolinan, and you listen to his presentation, it's very, very difficult to truly crystallize a rational argument against the passage of this bill other than politics. And for me, I find so much freedom in liberating myself from those shackles and throwing my full faith and confidence behind the people. Because in the end, our people are smart enough to see through politics and to vote based on those who really made the effort to do what's right. And no doubt, our people will be just as judicious in determining who to vote for in the next election after the results of this override vote come through and they sit back in truly way where their decisions were made based on research and data and the hard work that was put into this bill or whether or not it was politics. And I would like to invite everybody in this body to just take a taste of how sweet that freedom is to be able to truly vote your conscience and to just say, let the politics take its course. But I never closed my mind either to the points that are brought up and the concerns. And I wanted to take the opportunity to address some of the points and concerns that were brought up in the public hearing of this bill because certainly that can cause enough doubt to perhaps lean one way or the other. And one of the most pointed arguments for the status quo for only allowing one choice was this complex concept called adverse selection. And I wanted to talk about that. Adverse selection, as I've come to understand it in the insurance industry, is where you have multiple insurance companies providing options to the same pool of people, but you have more sick people choosing one option or another because it benefits them more. And that adverse selection then negatively impacts the bottom line of those insurance companies who are absorbing more of the unhealthy people than the other ones who are absorbing more of the healthy people. And I thought about that a great deal because it does make sense when you look at it from that first layer. Surely, when you have one insurance carrier and you're putting all the healthy and unhealthy people together and you're forcing all of them to go with that one carrier, it will bring down costs. But then I reflected on my time in the private sector and I remembered that adverse selection, as the technical term in the insurance industry, is present throughout the private sector. In the banking industry, you call it provision for loan losses. Because there's so many different banks on the island and if somebody comes to you because you have a better rate, you give them a loan and they don't pay, you eat that, you eat that cost of doing business. Should we then say that there should only be one bank on the island so that all the good borrowers and bad borrowers go together to one bank and they're able to have good borrowers and bad borrowers and it will save costs overall for everybody because they're all in one group? I think about the retail industry. And in the retail industry, the technical term is loss leaders. And we see it every day. Businesses will price things low to bring customers in the door. They'll sell things at cost or even take a loss just for the hope of bringing that customer in to sell other products as well. So when you have loss leaders in your retail establishment, you know that if I sell this wastebasket for a dollar, it actually cost me a dollar ten when you factor in shipping, but maybe they came in and bought trash bags also to go with it and that's where I make up my difference in the profit. Should we then close down American Grocery and cost you less that everybody can go to pay less and there won't be any loss leaders and maybe prices will go down for people? That doesn't make any sense. You can think about the restaurant industry. Think of our fast food establishments. They have dollar menus. And those dollar menus are loss leaders. But maybe we should close down Burger King and Wendy's so that everybody can go to McDonald's and then McDonald's can bring down its prices? That doesn't make any sense, Madam Speaker. Because in the end, in the end, the undeniable economic truth is that when you create competition and you provide choices to people, you create an environment that is beneficial to the So after listening to the argument on adverse selection, really thinking about it, I said, it makes sense and if I want to cling to that as my reason why I want to keep the status quo, then maybe I can lean on that crutch. But realistically speaking, it does not make sense to only offer one choice to our people because we want to put everybody together and maybe keep costs down. In the end, competition and choices is good for our people. And then when I think of the realities of what we're talking about here, it's not just taxpayer money and GovGuam employees and retirees. When you step back and think about it, look at it from the perspective of what we are doing here today and who we are talking about. What we are doing is deliberating on the benefits package that we want to offer our employees. And these employees are the people's employees. So what kind of benefits package do we want to offer the people's employees? And it's even more difficult to understand why we shouldn't offer competition when you think of the fact that this isn't some county in the United States where you can just, if you're a government employee and you don't like your benefits, you can just jump in your car and go to the next county and work for the next government because their benefits are better. We're not some county in the States where if you retired there, you can just jump in your car and go to the next county and do some work there and get better benefits. If your entire career was in government service, your best bet for getting another job is in government service. And on this island, we have one government. It's not like you can just get in your car and go work for another one. So what kind of benefits package do we want to offer our people's employees? Do we want to give them only one choice? Or would a prudent employer who values their employees give them more choices? Do we want somebody to pack their bags and leave, to go work in another government someplace else because our benefits are insufficient for the needs of their family? Madam Speaker, that is not a hypothetical, hypothetical question, that's a reality. And you know who are the ones who are most apt to do that? The ones who are most employable. The ones who can go off to wherever with a, a work history of many glowing accomplishments and they can say, this is all the awesome things I did on Guam and I'm coming over here because the benefits package over there just wasn't enough for my family. So if we want to retain valuable employees, we need to offer an appropriate benefits package. And the key to an appropriate benefits package is one that provides choices. We talk about our retirees and there won't be a single person in this room who says they don't value their retirees. But in the end, Madam Speaker, how much we value them is going to be reflected in this vote. Because our retirees only have one provider of health insurance and that is the, the health insurance the government of Guam provides. Do we value them so much that we want to give them choices? Truly, we value them. Let our votes reflect that value. This is the question before us, Madam Speaker. This is the hard work that Speaker Ben has put together in this bill. And I'm hopeful that today is the day and this bill is the bill where we will all be so brave enough to say, politics be damned. Let's do what we know is right. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, since there are none, Speaker Pangolinan to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I must again express my appreciation to yourself as well as this body to coming in to try and deliberate on a matter that is not easy. That is complex yet simple. It's complex because of all the pressures that everyone's getting from the different sides and which way are you going to go? What are you going to do? Who are you going to favor? How can I help you? How can I help you make up your mind? How can I help you change your mind? It makes it so complex, but it really is, when you again strip it to its most basic, honest offering, it is about a process of procuring insurance for the GovGuam employees that will guarantee choice, savings. I too, Madam Speaker, am a member of the negotiating health team as an ex-official member. I did not attend to hear the actual negotiations, I did not have a physical presence there. I didn't go to the meetings there. Why? Because I think I agree with the Attorney General on that issue. I think it's unconstitutional. I have a role as a legislative body, even more so now because the law requires that the contract needs to come down to the legislature. And I believe in the separation of powers. So I didn't physically attend those meetings. But because I was a member, Department of Administration copied me on every single correspondence, every single proposals, and I read every single one. And occasionally, very rarely, I would send in my comments when I thought that it just made sense and I had to voice that concern for the consideration of the negotiating committee, but I never voted on that. And that's why, after looking at all that, I'm convinced we can't go down that same path that is being guaranteed, the path that we'll go to if we don't pass Bill eighty-one. That's what convinced me is looking at all that after we said, what's behind curtain number two? I'm saying, how can you tell me that you're going to rate a proposal higher? Higher than one that offers you three times the physician network? That is lower in cost? That you don't need a referral to go see a specialist across the country, not on Guam? How can you re, re, rate that proposal lower than this one? That's what happened. That's why you have a protest. That's where I want to go. That's where I'm going to protect. That's... No, that's what convinced me, we got to change. And when I asked every single person that was sitting, that submitted those proposals, every single one of them said, take a look at the federal system process. Try to get through that process. Every single one of them, including Select here, said, take a look at this. That's the, that's what we're holding up as a better way. And that's what Bill eighty-one does, on the advice of all of those insurance experts. Not me. Not all by myself. Not all by lonesome me. It's those insurance experts. When we had the hearing for the rules and regulations for this process now that we're going, that we all, that we're saying now, oh, that's why I'm convinced I should go there? That's what I want to support? When we had the rules and regulations, one insurance company came with a list of deficiencies in those rules and regulations that could result in the questioning of the procurement process that literally went from concern number A to concern number Z. They almost ran out of alphabets of what is deficient in this current system even with those new rules and regulations. So they said, oh, we're going to change, we're going to change, we're going to change. Senator Cruz went to testify at the hearing and told the negotiating committee, Department of Administration they're headed by, and said, you've got to resolve this issue. You've got to take a look at all of the protests that were filed, all four of them, and change the draft rules and regulations that you're having for a public hearing now and incorporate those concerns and resolve those issues. Did they do it? I don't think so. I know they didn't. And if by chance they did, is the, are those the rules that we're going to operate this negotiation and selection process? No, they're not. There's no mention at all about those rules and the new rules and regulations governing this RFP. Look at the RFP. Go back and read the RFP and see for yourself whether it says, this RFP shall be pursuant to the procurement laws of Guam and the rules and regulations adopted such and such. No mention of those rules and regulations. We're going to go up, operate under the same rules and regulations that led to those four protests. And when you don't give those clear directions, that's what results in, it results in. But what is it? The governor, during the election campaign, and we have the video, it's like, I was told, they had the John McCain video that said he supported war reparations, but they just never gave it to him. Well, we got the governor's video, video. He posted it on his website. And you will see him saying there, I will work with the legislature to bring in more health insurance companies to give the people of Guam and the government of Guam... to give the people of Guam and the GovGuam employees a choice." On video. And what does he do? The one bill that is going to guarantee that, he vetoes. So, you know that something's wrong. It's not Bill 81 that's wrong in this case. It's the governor's wrong, that he's not fulfilling his promise that he made during the election to ensure that the interests of the people of Guam are going to come above any interest he has otherwise. Madam Speaker, we say choice. Madam Speaker, even Select Care, who is the single provider of health insurance services to the government, even Select Care decided to give the GovGuam employees a choice in the gyms. Remember when we used to only have one gym under the GovGuam Health Insurance? It was Paradise. Remember? The next year, Select Care said, "Even though I am the sole carrier, I am the only choice you have for health insurance, I'm going to give you a choice of gyms." And so, all of a sudden, we had Paradise. We had Synergy. We had Contendus. Now, why do you think that Select Care would say, "I think a choice of gyms is good for you, but I don't want you to have a choice on health insurance"? Why is it? Why is it that a choice for gyms is good, but you can't choose another health insurance carrier? You can only choose me? So, even them, they said, "Mm-mm. Choice is good." Well, more choices, even better. And that's what this is, Madam Speaker. I ask my colleagues, "Please, please, once again, consider whose interests you're going to represent as a member of this publicly elected body." Consider every... It's kind of a dichotomy because my good colleague says, "Don't consider the politics," which I agree. It's liberating. But consider who you said you were going to represent when you got in here. I am certain, because the choice is very clear in this bill. That's one thing. It is a choice that will allow the continuation of one single choice for health insurance versus more choices for health insurance for the GovGuam employees. All the other stuff are add-ons. The savings, the additional money for deductibles, all of that. But the fundamental choice you're making is whose interests? Is it the interest of the person that put you in here? All of them? Because one choice is only one person. The other choice is everyone else who elected you. One choice is only one single company. The other choice is all of the other companies that are doing business on Guam that should have access to the marketplace for GovGuam health insurance. One choice versus the community's choice, the people's or the community's interest, the people's interest, the taxpayer's interest. That's the fundamental thing. No more legislative intent. It's just simple policy. And I just can't, can't sit back and not attempt to express my opinion, express my position and explain it. I wish there had been more discussion. I wish, I wish I could read everybody's mind in terms of what are they thinking? What are their concerns? And I offer, I am open. If there's anything at all that I can shed a light on, please, let me know. And I wish that they would have let everybody know. Madam Speaker, once again, I do want to express my deepest appreciation to everyone who's going to deliberate on this bill, who's going to cast a vote on this bill. And I plead that you will protect the many interests that are going to be helped by this bill and cast and side on those. Thank you, and si tu masi, Madam Speaker.
Senator Magalay in Guam to place vetoed Bill 81 in the voting file to override. Are there any objections? No objections, so we're here. Going to ask the clerk then, if you can please just read the title and then call for the vote.
Bail Number 81-32 COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, and amended on the floor, introduced by Vicente Bencii Pangolinan, VJF Cruz, "An Act to Provide Health Insurance to Government of Guam Employees and Retirees for Fiscal Year 2014."
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Lim Tiako. Senator Lim Tiako, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Pangolinan, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. On the matter vetoed Bill Number 81, notwithstanding the objections of Magalay in Guam, Bill 81 received eight yea votes, seven nay. Bill 81 failed to be overwritten by Minat Jantaydossna de Hesler to in Guam. Senator Rispicio.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.
Motion without any objections. We will adjourn subject to the call of the speaker.